Thank you.
Good boy.
It's time to do it.
That's my.
I know, I was looking to see the time he getting her head together.
Y'all ready?
Whatever you say, boss.
Like to call to order the Arden County Board of Commissioners six o'clock regular meeting for Tuesday, November the 18th, 2025. At this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Brown to give the invocation for the Board of Commissioners as we seek guidance and wisdom in the work we're about to do for the citizens of Arden County.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you once again for bringing us together here tonight safely. Oh, we ask you to be with each and every one of us, Lord, as we make decisions for this county. Oh, we thank you for this past week for Veterans Day, Lord, and for all the veterans that that served here in this county and throughout the United States. We ask you to be with us as we go into next week for Thanksgiving, Lord, and let us remember what Thanksgiving is all about and bless each and every family, Lord. We ask you to help us through this night and help us have a safe trip home for us in Christ's name and sake, we do pray. Amen.
Amen. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Haupt to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask County Manager, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No, sir, no adjustments this evening.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the agenda is approved. Going down our list, we do have a special presentation for this evening. We had one at four o'clock to honor our veterans and we've got another one and I'll turn it over to the County Manager to kick that off.
Thank you. This evening, we have a request from the Board of Elections to recognize winners from the I Voted sticker contest. I'm looking in the audience, there's Susie. I'm sorry, I didn't see you. So, Susie Jordan is here to make this presentation to the board. Thank you. I couldn't find her.
Okay, thank you so much for allowing us to have this opportunity to recognize some of our students that won our second I Voted sticker contest. We had over 131 entries from kindergarten through high school. And so this year, we did it just a little bit different. We had a winner in each category. So, we had K through fifth grade and then sixth, seventh, and eighth, and then high school. So, we would like to recognize those students and I think, did we have the?
I'm gonna help you with the.
Okay.
He's gonna get it up for you.
Just to show some of the. These guys did a great job. They were all hand drawn. That was part of our rules that it cannot be computer generated. So, these are the three winners. And we have three of our board members, Chairman Jason Abernathy, and then June Reeves and Rhonda Wall, and then two staff members, Joanie Callison, who actually spearheaded this whole thing, and then Karen Johnson. But we'd like to recognize these three if they are here, so.
All right. Our K through fifth grade winner was Viola Caulfield.
And just to show you, we've got maybe a water bottle with your sticker on it, okay? Here's your cup. Just wanted to show everybody what these little bags had in them. There you go. Congratulations.
And she was from Arden Charter Academy of Arts and Science. So, our sixth to eighth grade winner is Maren Romero from West Middle School.
I'm not sure if he's here, but he's actually one of the students from one of our board members, Rhonda Wall, so she can take that to him then.
And then our ninth to 12th grade winner is, I hope I'm saying it right, Reese Powell from Lake Norman High School.
Thank you. And these will be our official stickers for 2026, so for the primary and for the general election, so thank you.
Perfect, great job.
Anybody got any comments?
I'm just impressed that we had the participation, to have our students take an opportunity to create a lifelong lasting stick. I mean, can you imagine your artwork's gonna wind up showing up and hopefully encouraging citizens to go vote? So, I'm very impressed, great job. Thank y'all for doing that.
Yeah, you know, to see, you know, the cardinal, the North Carolina bird, and to see the balloons and then the nation, so, you know, it really covered, and I'm sure it wasn't by design because I'm sure they didn't work in coordination, but to see those three, that's, that's great to someone recognizing Arden County and the balloon rally. There's a joke in my family, we see a cardinal, we see our mom. So, man, that's awesome. And then, you know, the American flag, so just awesome.
Not to mention talented, oh my goodness, so talented.
Thank y'all very much. Going down our list, our next item, we do not have an appointment before the board and it brings us down to our public hearing for tonight and I'll turn it over to the manager so she can kick that off and get Matthew Todd up.
Absolutely, thank you Chair Conley. This evening, we do have a public hearing to request a rezoning to, a rezon approximately 51.525 acres along Josie Road, and Mr. Matthew Todd is here to make this presentation to the board before we open it up for the public hearing.
Good evening to the board. The request we have before tonight is outlined in blue on the screen at the interchange near Tomlin Mill Road and 77. As currently, the property is rezoned RA and the request is to rezon to Highway Business Conditional District. It's 51 acres. Staff does support the request based on the following. Portion of the properties already exists within the 2045 Horizon Plan Highway Destination Commercial Designation. The properties are in close proximity to the I-77 interchange, and the conditions of the request aim to maintain safeguards for the surrounding landowner. As I stated, this is a conditional request, so the four conditions on the screen were the conditions that went through the planning board process and what the planning board reviewed. Addressing the truck parking facility would have its main entry exit on Tomlin Mill Road. There'd also be a berm, a five-foot berm placed along the northern border with a buffer, for buffer implantings or fencing. An engineered stormwater plan to manage runoff would be utilized, and downward lighting to minimize any light pollution. These came about mostly from the public input meeting that was held prior to planning board. After planning board, the applicant added the two conditions on the screen. Further, I'll say addressing the access in relation to truck traffic and limiting to Tomlin Mill Road, and also excluding the uses seen on the screen on number six. The HB uses are pretty extensive and this attempts to exclude some of those uses that would typically be allowed in highway business. This is the 2045 Horizon Plan showing the Highway Destination Commercial. Just an aerial of the property and the surrounding area. A few pictures, this is on Josie Road, looking north, site's on our right. Looking back kind of across Josie and Tomlin Mill Road. And again, looking back south on Josie Road. Planning Board did vote to recommend denial of this request, and I would be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Any questions for Mr. Todd?
If you, if the whole 50 acres was done, exactly how many trucks could park there?
I do not have that calculation if the whole 50 acres.
And where would the actual entrance be for the property coming off?
I believe has a site plan part of their presentation, but they would be accessing it through, if you look on the screen, the yellow and the pink property to the south between the property surrounded in blue and Tomlin Mill Road. Currently, those two properties are owned by Loves Truck Stop, so they do have an agreement with Loves that if rezoned, they would access it through those properties to the south to Tomlin Mill Road. And again, that's what the condition says, that for the truck traffic, it would have to access off of Tomlin Mill Road.
Do we have a copy of that agreement?
We have a copy of the agreement, but.
We don't have it here though?
It's not, but again, I don't know that it matters. It would be a condition, so if the agreement falls through, if this was approved as a condition, if the agreement doesn't work out, then they don't have access, they can't do that use.
That was my question.
Yeah.
So, just for clarification, when you're saying the agreement would be with Loves that owns the two properties, yellow and pink, for access to that. If Loves was not the owner, say for future, is that agreement tied to that piece of property through deed or just through ownership if it remains with Loves?
Well, again, and that's kind of why you guys don't have the agreement, because we're not bound by that agreement. We're binding it by a condition that says their access has to be directly to Tomlin Mill Road. How they end up getting that, who they get it from, if the properties change hands, that's between them.
So, our focus needs to remain on the piece that is in blue for the rezoning for this evening.
Yes, and again, the condition says that the access for truck traffic has to be off Tomlin Mill Road.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Any other questions? Advocate here to speak?
Yes, the applicant's here, are here.
Just use the keys right there to advance and go backwards.
Advance and go back. Advance, go back, okay. Chairman Commissioners, I'm Harry Tumis, I'm here representing Metrolina Capital. We are currently under contract on this property. And I'd like to introduce my team. This is Ben Casarino, he does a lot of consulting with us, he's our attorney, he does a lot of work with Metrolina, and William Allison, I think y'all might know him. So, anyway, we're gonna kind of split this presentation up into pieces, but one of the reasons that we actually selected this property, we've been looking for a truck parking facility to build for several years now. And of course, we looked at this one, when Loves got their rezoning case, it was actually part of us going under contract, because we felt like, well, they like having truck parking near them, and so the truckers could have got facilities to go to and such as that. So, that's one of the reasons we did this. We are, the owner representatives back here also, Mr. Mark Miller, and he'll speak probably in a little bit. But right now, it's residential, and so we looked at it because of the land use plan and it allowed trucking. So, this was kind of the lowest level of truck parking in that zone. So, we originally, we originally came in with, and talked to the planning staff about, do we go GB, do we go HB? And he said, well, the HB's a lower, lower use, so that would be what they preferred. So, that's what we did. And I'd like to turn it over to William.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm gonna sort of walk you through some of the maps here, and we're gonna switch to the first one here, a little bit of a property overview. If you take a little closer look, you can see the western boundary does directly join the interstate through Josie Road. Now, the intersection there at Josie and Tomlin Mill Road, right there, yep, and as you continue further on east on Tomlin Mill Road, you have this corridor in there, the commercial corridor that ties you back in over to Lowe's. But this is the property, the collective property, and directly to the south there, you'll see that the two parcels, that's where the Loves Truck Stop is going in. Yep, thank you. This next map gives you a little better perspective from the aerial standpoint, and you can sort of see what's built upon and what isn't. As we examine that one, you get a pretty good feel for how big Lowe's is and what impact it has on that area. Once again, you have this sort of corridor, commercial corridor, connecting the interstate interchange all the way over to Lowe's. So, you know, certainly, the land use plan is anticipating future development and growth along that corridor. Here with the area zoning and current land use, it's really a variety of different uses here. You've got some general business, you've got some highway business, of course. It's identified on here that you see the mechanics shop, and then further to the east, you have churches grading that's at the intersection of Fairmount and Tomlin Mill Road. Directly across from the Loves property, which is on the southern side of Tomlin Mill Road, you have pine wood builders, they build storage buildings. On the other side, on the west side of the interstate, you've got a variety of uses. You have a convenience store, you have a veterinarian clinic. As you can see, it's starting to develop and grow in that area. Here, we take a look at the original Horizon Plan, the 2030 Plan, and Matthew might could help me with when that was originally established. 2011. So, you've had this plan in place initially since 2011, identifying this area as a corridor, interstate interchange corridor, now for commercial. So, as we progress on to the next one, you know, the planning staff feels like that is still the appropriate use for this location, and it is substantially compliant with the plan. Once again, you see this sort of in blue, this corridor that connects all the way over to Lowe's, anticipating that, you know, at some point in time, all of this is gonna develop. Now, the Loves Truck Stop, once that is built, it will spur other development in this area and along Tomlin Mill Road as a support commercial for these other businesses. So, this is just the beginning, and I anticipate it will develop on the western side of the interstate as well. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Ben. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so, one of the, one of the things that Matthew, he was talking about the last planning board meeting, but our initial, our initial try at this was we went straight with a straight rezoning. We didn't ask for any conditions. We, because, because of the land use plan, we just kind of took it in as a straight, a straight rezoning case. And the planning board actually approved it at that, with that was a straight case, excuse me, 5-4. We were listening to the people. We didn't have, you know, if you do a, if you do a straight rezoning, you don't have to have a community meeting. So, we didn't hear from anybody until that night. So, when we heard the conditions that people were concerned about, we actually withdrew the application. And we turned right around and put conditions on it and resubmitted. And the reason we did it kind of so fast was because we're under contract, and I don't know how much time he would have given me, but anyway, so we did it back to back. But basically, it was to put some conditions on there that we felt like the neighbors wanted, wanted to hear. So, anyway, and then we can kind of jump to where our last rezoning was, and we also heard at the planning board some more, so that's why we added some more conditions into it, because we were hearing some more concerned about that. Yeah, we are, as you know, highway business conditional use. We've restricted, we took out 26 uses in here, and I'll go through a little bit of this about how interesting, I think the RA and the HB are very similar in a lot of cases. And I gave y'all a package, and it's got a, it's got a list in there that kind of shows you, shows you what can, what zoning classes are allowed, what is allowed, what the uses are allowed in there in RA and HB, and what we've stricken out. So, we've stricken, we've stricken a lot of conditions out that are actually in the current zoning class as well, because it was in both, it was in both zones. But we added, we added a condition, 26 stricken, stricken conditions, and then the, what we said was, instead of just the truck traffic from the parking coming out Tomlin Mill, we tried to make it where all trucks would come off from Tomlin Mill. Now, the DOT's probably gonna make you have some delivery vehicle, E, bless you, EMS, those kind of things, so, and I'm sure the fire, the fire trucks are gonna want to be able to get in there as well. So, other than those kind of things. The handout I gave you's got the restricted uses in here highlighted that aren't permitted. And then, this, this sheet that we handed out, I thought was rather interesting, the, I'm sorry?
Is that on this screen?
I'm sorry, yeah, it is, I'm not keeping up, am I?
Okay. I think this is where you're at.
Yeah, that's where, we're past that, one past that. Yep, I'm sorry, yeah. So.
Can you hand run that thing to me?
I can. Okay. Anyway, so, the yellow, the yellow conditions on here are, we've stricken these. When we struck them, they were struck from HB, because that's what we're asking for, but they are allowed today in the highway, I mean, in the residential district, they're allowed there. And the reason we did it was like ambulance services. Well, that can be rather noisy, rather obnoxious to be near it. There's a composting facility, we struck that out. That's allowed in RA right now, today. And so, there were just some things in there we felt like were beneficial for the neighborhood. The things in the brown section up here are stricken just from HB. Those are not allowed in RA, and it's things like, you know, bar, bus station, drive-in theaters, funeral homes, liquor stores, things that we felt like were, you know, taxi terminals, of course, I don't guess we have those anymore, but things we felt like were dance halls, fortune tellers, that just weren't, that didn't fit. And there, just to point this out, there's some stuff in RA that's allowed right now that we are not really sure that, we can't strike them, because we're not asking for RA, because it's already RA, but there's some things in here, shooting ranges.
I'd like to ask, hold on one second, I'd like to ask whoever's cell phone, please mute that if you can, please. Thank you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Correctional institutions, seepage and sludge disposal, that I think HB would be a better zoning class because of that as well. So, and you can, you can see what things are there for that. Sawmills, those all. Now, this is just an interesting slide, I think, that, you know, I'll spend a lot of time on this, but all these uses are allowed in both zones. We didn't strike any of these, but these are allowed in both zones right now. So, I just thought that was rather, rather interesting. There's just a lot of overlap, and you wouldn't think so, but there is. So, this is what that step up, the step up in what I was talking about from RA to HB instead of going all the way to GB. That's why we got that.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Harry.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for being here tonight. My name is Ben Casarino. As I've mentioned, I'm a lawyer with an office in Davidson. And I'm here tonight to help run through a couple of the slides and explain maybe a few things, maybe that can address some of the questions that you might have or have had. This is a letter from, from Loves that talks about the access. This is not an actual easement agreement, but if this comes to fruition, what we anticipate is that we will have an actual easement agreement with Loves that will get recorded in the clerk's office and that will run with the land and, and be binding upon all future owners of both properties. So, that's how we would, we would handle that situation, but at this preliminary stage, this was designed to let you know that Loves is committed to this, this joint access for the use behind, because they're very supportive of that use. This will be a synergistic use with their facility, and it also is a synergistic use with the Lowe's facility. So, what you're, one of the advantages of having that is you've got three uses right in one localized area that can serve each other, so that instead of having to go to different areas, creating more traffic on more roads, you can have these uses all combined in one, one localized area. So, it actually reduces the number of trips, actually reduces the amount of traffic on, on your roads as a whole, because they're right here off of the highway, right at the exit. So, a truck can stop and get gas, a truck leaving Lowe's can get gas, they can park their trailer, and they can get right on the highway, or they can pick up their trailer, get gas, get right on the highway, all right in this, all right in this area. They don't have to travel further down Tomlin Mill, they don't have to travel somewhere else in the county. They can do that all in one, one spot. And that's, that's really what your planning department recognized when they, when they planned out for the future, for these uses to be in this area right at the exit of I-77. Hopefully, that addresses your, your question. If you have any other questions, happy to, to answer those as well. This is the, what I believe is the approved site plan. This has not been approved, but this has been zoned for this, right?
Right.
The zoning is approved for the, for the Loves facility, and this is their, their proposed site plan without the shared easement or shared access on Tomlin Mill. So, as you can see, they've got the pumps, they've got two means of ingress and egress, and they've got parking. And this is how they would, they plan to develop the site without our, our property being developed. our property being developed in conjunction with it. This is how they see the access working with our property. We would kind of trade a little bit. We'd let them have them some parking back in the back. They'd let us share access on the side. So, still, you only have two points of access on Tomlin Mill. You don't have a separate third access, which is, which is helpful in your planning as well. And then that would, that would access the back of the property, the 51 acres that we're, we're talking about today. So, what you really have here is, is an opportunity to, you know, to create more synergy with these two properties working together, rather than to have separate uses and perhaps another entrance on Tomlin Mill with this, you know, additional traffic. So, that, I think, I think that's an opportunity for, for this property that's unique in this application. All right. And then, just to show you, this is kind of an illustration of where that, where that access point would come in off of Tomlin Mill to access the, the 51 acres. And this is just an illustration of, you know, maybe one way that this could happen. This hasn't been engineered, it hasn't been vetted, it hasn't gone through DOT or anything like that. This is really just for informational, to show you what, what, what it could look like, you know, if it were, if it were to proceed the way we have it, you know, set up today.
Thank you. So, to, to kind of bring this to a finish, then, the reasons for the rezoning, we feel, we feel like that the rezoning request matches the uses that are in the 2030 plan and the 2045 plan. The property is along a I-77 quarter next to an interchange adjacent to net commercial, other commercial properties. It's, surrounding zoning is moving to business and commercial uses, as we noted in the actual uses that are, that are outside the zoning. The concerns of the neighbors, we feel like we, we try our best to meet those concerns. We heard a lot of things about traffic on Josie Road and making sure we had access to Tomlin Mill and, and all those things. And we tried to address those things the best we could. And I think it is a good opportunity, because if, if Loves, if Loves goes ahead and does their site plan without the access to that property, that, that property will have to be developed going on to Josie Road. I mean, there won't be another way to get there. So, anyway, I think that's a, it's a good opportunity to do something there. And the Loves, the Loves group has been, they like, they like this idea. It just, it's synergistic, as Ben was saying. It fits in with them, and it'll feed their, their facilities. We're not really competing with each other much. And it'll get the trucks off the interstates, hopefully. That's, that's one of the things that, you know, it is illegal for the trucks to park on the interstates. I know they do it. But one of the things I think might be important to you is, is our interest initially going into this thing was truck parking. And because they're parking all over the road, I mean, we can get them in there. And I went to St. Louis, and I studied this and, and got a lot of information about, from other trucking companies that were owning these things and how they were working. And so, we were pretty excited about it. And you don't, it's not really for the owner-operator, guy's got one truck or two trucks. Most of these things are, the facilities are for small trucking companies or medium-sized trucking companies that have got multiple trucks. And you might, we might be, these things are, they're fully fenced, they're secured gates, all that kind of stuff. So, you have to have a permit to get in. But basically, the contracts are kind of with the company. So, the company controls it, not just the truck driver. So, I think that adds a level of security that, that maybe people don't realize how this thing really works. But that's kind of what they do. So, does anybody have any questions or anything?
Any questions?
Mr. Tim, just going back to Commissioner Brown's question earlier to Matthew Todd. I don't believe, please state if you can, he had asked how many trucks could be parked there. And I don't know if your intent is the entire amount, but whatever your amount is, what is the anticipated amount of parking that you, that you believe to be, that would be there on whatever park you're, you're looking at making truck park?
Right. Typically, these things are 10 to 15 acres. That's, that, and that's a large one. I mean, I'd say most of them are five, three to five acres. And you're getting down in Charlotte and stuff like that, and you can't find any land, you know, so, like that. But we were, we were kind of figuring this was somewhere in the neighborhood of, I mean, we were, we're hoping this would be what we'd like to see. And we put it up here, and I don't know how many it would be designed for, but you're, you're talking about hundreds. I mean, it's, it's hundreds of trucks. Now, we wouldn't do all that at one time, because we wouldn't need to. But as we contract out and stuff like that, but it is hundreds of trucks.
Then your, your targeting would be, at least if that's inappropriate, is, is more towards contract carriers, your, your, I'm going to use R&amp;L or, or Estes, or, you know, that type, not, not your more local or, or smaller groups, I'm assuming?
Typically, it is. I mean, you're trying to have, you know, the fewer contacts you've got, the, it's easier to control that. And you've got more control on the, the truck driver themselves when you've got a, in a corporate.
Are, are you anticipating there being a, a drop and rehook point for this as well?
It could well be that. Could very well be that.
And talking to Loves, has they, have they said when they plan on starting?
Well, they're actually, actually, he called me yesterday, and he's, he's kind of keeping up with us, because he's waiting to see what happens with us before they, because they, they, they gave me this site plan, they gave me this site plan, that, that's what their intentions were right now. Now, that could change, you know, the site plan hasn't been submitted. And so, they actually drew this up for us. You see, it's got their logo on it. That's just kind of what they thought might work out, because they're just swapping out, you know, lost parking places and things like that. So, he's kind of waiting on us to find out what's happening before he moves forward. But if, if, you know, they'll be, they'll be submitting, I guess, soon, it, with an easement or without.
I've got old eyes. I can't read the spine print.
Okay.
In the conversations with Loves, their portion, and you may not know this, is there any indication of what they have for amount of parking on, on their facility? I know there may be something in all that, that...
In this, in this one?
Yes.
This one without, there's, I think there's 70 maybe there?
And I believe the Loves that is open and functioning now off of 40 is about, what, 15 acres, give or take?
Right.
So, that's just a, and that right there is sitting on approximately 11?
Yes, ma'am. And they're not, they, what they don't have here on this site plan is a, they don't have a truck maintenance facility. And so, that was one of the things that, that we actually...
Truck wash.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the things that, with truck wash and the maintenance right here, they don't have that on that staceful facility. I mean, they do have maintenance, but they don't, they don't here. They don't have maintenance on this site.
Essentially, a 61-acre site, give or take, when you tie all of it together.
It is. It is.
I have a quick, are you done?
Mm-hmm.
I have a question. When you, when you met with the planning board, you were proposing a straight-up rezoning?
The first time.
The first time. So, the second time, when you had your meeting with these guys, did the public get to see the anticipated uses concept compared to the original concept? And when you talk about coming back with conditions based on what you heard from the public, address that a little more detail, please, because I'm not familiar. I remember reading the minutes, but I don't remember off the top of my head at the moment. What was their main concerns? And what does your conditions take care of, of those concerns?
All right. Well, first off, we did not have this, this idea planned. This, this is what we, this is what we would like to do. That's, this is our intended use. But we did not have this plan.
Either time you went to the planning board?
Y'all, y'all the first, this is the first time we've shown it to anyone. And the reason was, we got asked that night, like, where are you putting your truck parking? And so, we're, we said, well, we're hearing no trucks on Josie Road. So, that's one reason we went down this way with it. And it's closest to the interstate, and so, that...
And just, just to reiterate, that, you know, this is not to show, like, dimensions or, you know, like, we've, we've, we've put in the buffer and the, and the, and the berm and things like, this doesn't show any of that. So...
I just wondered, that was my question, though. I wondered...
Conditions would still stand, but this was just, this is just for illustration.
That was my question, though. If, if the public, and I'm, we'll hear in the public hearing, the public, if they've not seen this concept until now, I wonder how much of their concerns are potentially ratified, are satisfied, or not?
Or amplified.
Amplified. I mean, that's what I guess we'll hear coming. And that's my concern, is the, the citizens that were either for or against this in the, in the planning board hearing has, has never seen a concept. And I think that was part of some of their concerns, is they didn't know what might go there. And my second question is, was there a TIA traffic impact study done? Or it may not have been required, but have you guys done that? And to look at the Tomlin Mill impact of just Loves, and then what you would do? I know it's going to be hard to keep people off of Josie. You can call it an emergency entrance, whatever. But I'm going to assume traffic, whether that be cars or whatever, is going to come and go on Josie Road, once those facilities would, would be opened, if it was allowed.
Maybe I can answer.
You're okay.
I mean, maybe I hopefully can, can address those.
Okay.
And if not, then we'll, we'll try again. But I think part of what, on your first question regarding the, the illustration, I think what's really important are the, the conditions. So, the conditions are what's everlasting, right, under the, under the, this plan may or may not happen. It may happen differently than that, but the conditions remain. In other words, the buffering, the no-truck traffic on Josie Road. And there was a list of like six conditions that were, one of them including 26 uses that were not allowed to have on the property. So, those are really the meat and the potatoes of the application. And hopefully, we've addressed the concerns, the planning concerns of the, the surrounding neighbors. And we designed those uses that were stricken in order to alleviate some of the concerns regarding the traffic, because a lot of those uses are higher traffic, higher trip-generated uses. So, we wanted to try and keep that in mind, as was the, I think, the number-one concern on Josie Road. So, that was, that was why we, we struck those. And we're certainly willing to listen to other concerns. I know there's, there's folks here. And if they want to convey concerns as well, we'd be happy to get back up and, and talk about those, and, and talk about addressing those. And then, what was, I'm sorry, what was your second question?
I was just saying, that would be my interest, is to hear what the public thinks of your conditions you've added and potentially your concept, because they've not seen that. So, I guess that, I look forward to hearing and seeing their reaction to that.
Yeah. And let me answer specifically the traffic impact study. We haven't done any engineering. We've, we're still just under contract.
Right.
So, if we bought it, that would be part of what's being required to do later. And one of the, the, the public didn't see, I was going to show you, so, the, the conditions that were imposed after the planning board meeting. So, they haven't seen those either. I mean, y'all have, but they haven't seen those unless they've talked to staff either. So, they don't know what 26 things we struck out. And then what we added, what we added was the 26 exclusions and all truck, truck traffic being directed to Josie. That's what we added after the planning board.
And then, I now remember on, on your second question, so, even, so this still has to go through all of your other code requirements.
Right.
So, it still has to go through site plan review, still has to go through all of your erosion control, sediment, traffic analysis. It, this is just step one out of a multi-step process.
That was just my concern, was just making sure what the public and, and people had seen conceptually from when you started to tonight.
Yes.
And how much of the concerns and conditions changes any of their minds if it does, one way or the other. So, I look forward to hearing that.
Same here.
Because I didn't know whether they had seen that or not.
Okay. Anybody, any other questions?
Not right now.
As Melissa kind of mentioned earlier, I apologize, y'all, I've got a hip that's being ugly. You know, we're talking, in your portion, 52 acres, you know, plus or minus.
Right.
How much of that are you anticipating being under concrete?
Under concrete, paved?
Yes. Paved, paved, I shouldn't say just concrete, I apologize. What percentage of that?
That's, I, I don't know. It would be, it would be significant.
Significant?
Yeah. I mean, we, we intend, we would, we, we would intend, the, the truck parking facility we want to do would be fully paved, fenced, lit, security gates, all that kind of stuff on it. So, that would be paved. You know, this shows some stuff that, you know, may, may be or may not. But it, it shows the stormwater right here. We, we don't know till the wetland guys look at it, you know?
What are the anticipated buildings? I can't see.
Can you read them? All right. So, this is, this is like a dock, like a cross dock right here. This is a, this is a, this is a, like a trucker's club. It's like a, it's, it's like an upgraded place for them to shower. It's a workout room. It's, it's kind of a, I don't know how to describe it other than just an upgraded Loves club. So, the...
That would be a Loves product?
It will not be Loves.
Okay.
No. We're, we're completely separate.
Right. I understand. I, I, and, and I thought I heard you say NBA Loves. So, I apologize if that's not what you said.
No, sir. It would be, like, like, if you go into Loves, you get like five minutes for a shower, and then you get number four, time for your shower. This would be a little bit different, and more locker room oriented, that kind of stuff.
I just was curious what, what all the different buildings were. I know they're not set in stone, but since nobody's seen that potential concept, I felt like it was important for everybody to understand the concept, what's on the concept, what the buildings are, or proposed at this point, a potential concept. And, because I think that, based on my understanding, watching your planning board meeting, I think that the unknowns was just as concerning as what they knew at the time. And I understand what you're, you're trying to address that. So, I felt like that. I think that's important to say what's in the concept, even though the concept is not locked in.
Right.
And I just think that's important, to get the information out for, and to let them digest it and see what they think when they speak, because they're seeing this for the first time now, where they did not see that when they opposed it before.
Yeah. And that, and that's one reason we included all those uses in RA. But you got a truck repair here, because they don't have one. Truck wash, they don't have one. So, we were... So we were, we, we've, I guess in our applications, where we always say like our intentions, our intentions were for truck related and automotive related stuff that tied into the interstate traffic flow and all that kind of stuff.
I assume if that concept come to light, are you, so your water and sewer anticipated needs, you can meet whether or not you're able to get water and sewer from Harmony? I know at one point there was discussion about that. I just wondered if there was any news to that is, is, is your concept able to be done as drawn with all of our other conditions potentially and your anticipated concept? Without getting, uh, water and sewer from Tra, uh, Harmony?
It can be done. We've had discussions with Loves about if Harmony can't get their sewer, of doing a treatment plant together to facilitate it both. You know, we'd have to probably come out of our property for that. And, but, but I did talk to, um, the mayor within the last couple, or today, actually. And he said that, that, that's looking good. I don't know, he, he, he thinks they got the money for it. So whatever that means, I'm not sure, 100% sure. And he, he's, you know, he's supposed to know that in January. So that's what I heard from him.
So conceptually, there's things that aren't concrete. Logistically and functionality wise, there's still some things that are not worked out at, at this point.
Correct.
Fair to say, okay.
And I do have one more on the entrance which connects into the property. You mentioned a security controllable. How would you control traffic or who uses or doesn't use that entrance into the back?
So what we would do is we would probably, in other words, there would be, if we had our truck parking here, that, there would be prob, no access, there'd be a gate here. So this would be fenced and a gate, security gate there.
And how would the trucks get through a security gate?
Ma'am?
How would the truck, truckers be aware of how to get into a security gate?
They, well, because they're, we pre-contract with these guys. So they're going to have a code to get in through their company. It's just like, um, going into storage or something like that. Yeah, phone apps, right, that's right.
Any other questions?
I just want to hear from the public with the concept and all the things we know now they didn't know, it'd be interesting.
Matthew, you got anything?
Thank you.
Matthew, you got anything?
I'll just, and I mean, part of the reason, and, and this is the first time the site planned, but just keep in mind that it's not part, it's not a condition at this point. It is very, it is just for information. The whole thing could be reversed, I mean, di- different uses. Anything that's not, anything that's allowed on HB that's not on the number six condition where a lot have been kicked out could be allowed. So it could look completely different. So I mean, truly, just take it with a grain of salt, but.
And before I open the public comment period, are y'all okay if we take a 10 minute break? Because we've got several. Okay.
We're going to need to keep it right at 10.
Yeah, we'll take a 10, that way Brad can stretch out. We'll just take a 10 minute break, we'll start back at 7:02.
Okay, we're back from a break. I'm sorry, a couple of us needed a little break here. So at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing to consider the request from landowners Moreno LLC represented by applicant Harry Tumas of Metro Atlanta Capital Partners LLC to rezone approximately 51.525 acres along Josie Road. I'll open up the public hearing, and the first person signed up is Amy Marie Miller. If you will just approach, when you approach, state your name and your address, your full address, and you'll have five minutes.
Thank you. Amy Marie Miller, 169 Branchwood Road, Statesville, North Carolina. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. My primary concern is twofold. One, as of November 18th at 3:20 PM, the DOT has stated, based off a public records request, that they have no intention of changing the on or off ramps at that section for the next three years. That will be a safety issue. The other issue that I have is the increase in crime rates. They have been a trend. The National Highway, I'm sorry, the National Motor Carriers Highway Safety Agency, which is a federal agency, have tracked increased crime rates at truck stops, commercial truck stops from 2023 to 2024. 19% increase in cargo theft, 21% increase in violent crime, 36% increase in strategic theft, and 17% increase in sex crimes. The North Carolina Highway Patrol also has stated that after the rest stop opening from exit 35 to 87, the number of on-road parking citations has been reduced by 42% because after the rest stop opened, they did a huge push to push people to the rest stop and get them off. That is a statistic that was forwarded to me by Raleigh. I have those emails if anyone would like them. With the increased crime at commercial truck stops and on-the-road parking decreasing, I would ask that you do not approve this until the traffic situation can be addressed with DOT. There are accidents there all the time. They will increase. Someone will get hurt. There is not a whole lot of room between the off-ramp for 77 northbound and Josie Road as it is. The traffic from Lowe's Home Improvement Warehouse comes right through there, and if traffic backs up in that intersection, someone will get hurt. If traffic backs up on those ramps, people will get hurt. And your decision here tonight affects that. Thank you. I yield back the rest of my time.
Thank you. Amy Sherrill?
Hello, my name is Amy Sherrill, and I'm at 119 Sunshine Farm Lane, and my parents are beside of me, and they're not able to be here tonight, but their land joins the land for the proposed rezoning. I don't have a lot of facts before me. I just have concerns for the community. Everything the person just said before me, I agree with 100%. So, again, here I am standing before you, and I don't know a lot more than I knew at the last meeting. I know there's what, 51 acres, and I know that 10 to 20 whatever or so acres, they're wanting to put a truck parking lot in. I do not see how that benefits our immediate community whatsoever. Then I also see the rest of the acreage being rezoned highway business with a lot of unknowns. They've said what they are striking out. That's good, but what are we putting in? What is going to be there? What's going to affect the community? I was raised here. I've been here all of my life. I like the agriculture setting. I like seeing the deer in the backyard, and I hate for all of those to be displaced with a sea of cement around us. I kind of look at it, I look at traffic, the traffic with North Iredale High School, the traffic with Lowe's. It's already very difficult to get out of Josie Road onto Tomlin Mill Road. Add several hundreds more trucks. I can see that just being a larger problem for us in the community. To me, for lack of better words, it's like a big piece of puzzle, our community, and we've all put puzzles together. And you have that one open spot that you take a piece of the puzzle. So you pick one up, and you try to turn that piece of puzzle right and left. You try to push it in that spot to make it fit. You manipulate that piece of puzzle in any way possible to make it fit into the puzzle. Well, this piece just doesn't fit our community whatsoever. You know, we're not opposed to development, but please develop it with something that's going to benefit the community, my neighbors, the people who have been there for years. You know, and like I said in my last meeting, they kind of talk, but it's the truth. It's going to affect the people there. It's going to affect us. It's going to affect the people that's sitting in this room. Before you vote, you know, think about sitting in your living room in your favorite chair, looking out your window. What do you see now? What do you see out your window? And then close your eyes and open them up and look out your window. And you see unending parking lot, tractor trailers, strangers, people coming and going, just all kinds of things. And think about how you would feel living there in your home where you've always felt safe and secure, where you've enjoyed most of your life. So we just ask that you please don't rezone this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Todd Beavis?
Hello, my name is Todd Beavis. I'm a resident of 341 Josie Road. And first off, I'd like to say that the developer has been very deceitful from the beginning. They haven't given us any answers of solidity. They've vacillated anywhere between 10 acres of parking to 20 acres with an indecision of what they're going to do with the other 30. The concerns that they've addressed are the simple ones. The berm, the main entrance being addressed through Tomlin Mill, those are all simple fixes. The thing they cannot fix is the traffic. They're inviting more traffic. They're inviting slower-moving, big trucks. There are going to be increased costs to maintain the road. And then also, not being honest with what they plan to do with it. All they've given you is if, if, and if Lowe's does this, and if that happens. So what's happening here is the camel is asking you permission to stick its nose under the tent. How can you rezone something where they haven't told you what they're going to do? Well, we might do this, and if we get this, then we might do that, but they haven't given you anything in stone that their intentions are. There are 200 permitted uses in the HB zoning. The huge vast majority of those businesses benefit the community around that area. It's a small community, but it would benefit in some way the majority of those business listings. And what's happening here, the benefit is to one person, one entity. The benefit is to the developer. It doesn't benefit anybody else other than a small percentage, one or two people who will be working to maintain his property. So I don't know how you could approve a zoning with so many unknowns and so much vagueness. He's changed it from the first meeting we had to the second meeting, and now he's surprised us with new stuff that they potentially want to do. And therefore, the deception is my biggest concern. I don't think you'll find anybody in our community that will entertain or be utilizing the truck parking because they won't. It's not going to eliminate the traffic. The trucks will still continue to park on the exit ramps and the entrance ramps, just as they do at the Loves over here, and just like they do at exit 42. It won't change one thing. So that's all I have, and yield the rest of my time. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Pardon me? Todd Beavis. Todd Beavis. Thank you all. Neil? Next person after Mr. Neil will be John. I think it's going to be Whalen.
I'm David Nail. I'm at 153 Sandra Drive. I don't directly adjoin this property, but I'm across Sandra Drive from it. I just want to come up here to say that I'm opposed to this development, and I learned a little more tonight. Like he said, every time he comes up here, there's something new they present to us, and it's the unknowns that's the biggest issue. But he's talking hundreds of trucks. Granted, they may just be parking or trailers, but those trailers have to be picked up and unhooked and dropped off. Do they have nine to five hours banker's hours? Are we going to be hearing trucks dropping trailers and picking trailers up at 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, day and night, seven days a week? And that's my concern, is my little peace of mind basically out in the country. That's all I have to say. I'm opposed to it, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Mr. Whalen?
I am John Whalen. I live at 184 Sandra Drive. I do own adjoining property to the requested rezoning. Anyhow, according to the map that Mr. Tumas set up a while ago, I should be, I will be living right at the retainment pond. I'll address retainment pond just a little bit. I do have a couple of concerns. One of them is safety. I know that depending on which part of the presentation of Mr. Tumas and the other men that you listen to, we will or we will not use Josie Road. They kept changing their story even tonight. Well, we're going to use this, but maybe not. We're going to use Josie Road. They never had a firm story. Anyhow, October 14th, between 8:30 and 9 o'clock on Josie Road near Sandra Drive, there was an accident. A UTV was hit and rolled over by traffic. On October the 21st, between 7:00 and 7:15 AM, my wife was on her way to work, and on the corner in Josie Road that Mr. Tumas says we're maybe not going to use. My wife had to drive off in the side ditch to keep from getting run over by an 18-wheeler who couldn't get around the corner. And they will be coming down through there more if this is proposed. I'll come back to this in just a second. October the 21st, between 5:00 and 5:30, there was an accident. It's been stated, a high accident area on the north off-ramp on Tomlin Mill Road. ECOM, the side-by-side in ECOM has reported that, the intersection of Tomlin Mill and the off-ramp, they have reported that as well. One of the things that concerned me is the 21st, my wife could have been killed by a truck driver not doing his job properly. That's just one. Now we're wanting to add 200 to 300 trucks in there. And my wife has to drive off the roadway that my taxes go to take care of to make allowances for someone else. I think that's an issue. But this is the thought I have about that. Tomlin Mill, Josie Road, Olin Loop, possibly Fairmont, I'm not sure about that. We have several folk in electric wheelchairs that ride the roads. If that Tuesday morning on the 21st, that would have been one of them electric wheelchairs, that individual had just been killed because they could not have gotten off the road. Do we care? Does it make any difference to us? Are we going to try to protect the citizens? Now, I think if it's approved, I think Mr. Tumas and Mr. Miller and the groups all will be required to put in a cart path, like put in and maintain a cart path to give these people, because they are protected under the American with Disability Act. We need to protect them. Second issue, just to address briefly, water runoff. I know he's got a plan. I'd like to say publicly, water does not run uphill like his plan showed. 27,154 gallons per acre is the wastewater on a paved acre. So if we have one inch of rain, that's 1.3 million gallons of wastewater to go somewhere. If we have a three-inch rain, that's 4.1 million gallons of water to go somewhere. Now, if it's not done properly, and I know we all have engineers, and they all know what they're doing more than we do, when the water overflows, it will destroy Sandra Drive. At that point, the board has voted to isolate 15 families on Sandra Drive because they can no longer get in and out. Oh, it ain't going to happen that way, we think, really. I believe it will. He talks about retention ponds. Again, I mentioned, water don't run uphill. He's wanting to put it right behind my house, according to the drawing. But I know he's going to tell me it's going to change. It's going to change. But I believe tonight, Mr. Tumas is asking you, the Board of Commissioners, to spit in the wind and see what happens to you. Thank you for your time. I am John Whalen.
Thank you, sir. The next person is Robert, and I cannot read the last name.
Well, I'm here.
Me and you write about the same.
You know, for 36 years, you never got any cable for a TV, can't get high-speed internet, but I'm going to get a truck stop and a place to clean up crap if they don't get a sewer in. Now, I am just so happy about that.
Give me your name and your full name and your address.
Robert Bryan, 139 Sandra Drive. What John said about water running uphill is absolutely correct. I faced that whole thing from less than 100 feet away. We have a predominantly southern wind that blows. Now, I don't know how many hundred trucks going to end up out there running day and night. If they park all night, they're going to run all night. Especially refrigerator units, they have no choice. Excuse me. But we're going to be smelling that constantly. There's a lot of trees out in that area. It's just going to get coated with that stuff. The ground's going to get coated with it. Five years from now, when they move on from running the place out there, and 20 acres of concrete or blacktop or whatever it is is all filled up with holes from trucks, all that garbage is going to be running straight through those holes, straight into the ground, then running right towards all of us into our well water. That would be enjoyable. I'll have you guys out for dinner that day. I don't think any of you'd want to come. How many of you have been out there recently, even seen the place? You have, sir? Would you want all of that going on next to you? Right now, I'm just talking about stuff going on there. Now, we're going to start on these guys, ones whose story changes every other time. We get done here tonight, I pretty much bet the story will get changed before there's another meeting or whatever comes up. But in between light pollution all night, noise pollution constantly, air pollution constantly, illegal drugs, prostitutes, illegal immigrant truck drivers, they handed out 150,000 truck drivers licenses too. I have plenty of things to be concerned about out there. You won't be because you don't live there. And what, five of you have never even been out there? Can anybody give me a good reason why it has to be that? Can't think of anything else to put out there? That place has been for sale forever, I know that. But you could do a lot better with that property than a truck stop. Don't you think? You want to push your 2045 project? Put a school out there, a trade school, teach people how to do something to build your 2045 project. We already got high school students. They're not going to scare the people going to other classes. But the way the roads are out there, they're already busted up going across the highway from trucks. You get two or three trucks now backed up coming from Lowe's or coming from the other way. You're going to sit there forever waiting for them to make a turn. And it's, you know, not to mention when they pull right out in front of you like what happened to me just two days ago. But it is just a bunch of trouble all you're going to have out there, and you're not going to make the people that live out there happy with it. I have yet to find one person that wants the thing, not that lives out there at least. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Galen Beavis?
Hi there. My name is Galen Beavis. I live on 341 Josie Road. I'm going to give you some stats of Josie Road and the roads that touch it and will be affected if y'all pass this rezoning for the 50-plus acres. North Iredale High School and Early College has 800 kids that drive to and from school and will be affected by this. We need to protect these young drivers. This morning, I was there at the intersection of Josie Road and Tomlin Mill going towards 77 at 7:40 this morning, and the cars were backed up from Tomlin Mill past the interstate with these kids going to school at North Iredale and the Early College. There is around 10 school buses that use Josie Road a day from three different schools. This will affect kids getting to school and home every day on time. Lowe's has over 900 people a day going to work between two different shifts, and over 518-wheelers dropping off and picking up loads every day that's on Tomlin Mill. Then you add Loves when they build it. And I have a statistic that I, or not a statistic, excuse me. I talked with the external department for the new builds with Loves, growth and construction needs, and they informed me that the Tomlin Mill location did not have a start date and was not on their agenda to have a start date. So that clears that up. From the interstate of Josie Road and Tomlin Mill to make a left-hand turn to go south on 77, it is approximately 200 yards. One 18-wheeler is 80 feet long. So seven 18-wheelers would back up traffic from Josie Road and gridlock to turn right off of Josie Road to get on the interstate. So us, the people that live on Josie Road, we're gridlocked. We can't make a right-hand turn or a left-hand turn to get on Tomlin Mill. My husband and I moved up here on Josie Road five years ago to get away from Mooresville because it took him 28 minutes to go six miles. And now we are forced with the same situation we had to move from, and we are not happy. We had a huge investment that we built on Josie Road, our forever home, and then you have a developer coming in from Mooresville that wants to change our life but not put it where he lives. Josie Road is a main road for several other roads that feed into it. We have around 400 vehicles on Josie Road a day from Tomlin Mill to Olin Loop that Josie Road deadends to. And the main question is what's going to happen with the 50-plus acres of rural farmland if it is rezoned highway business? How can you of rural farmland if it is rezoned highway business? How can you rezone something that the developer will not tell you what he is going to do with it? He has changed his mind several times. Every time we have a meeting, it's something new. I understand that we have a 2045 plan, but not all of this has to be done in 2025. We need businesses that are for our farmers and our small community that will give revenue back to Iredale County. This truck parking does not give revenue back to Iredale County. It gives revenue back to the developer. Per the pictures that I gave y'all, there is two sharp curves on Josie Road. There is no room for two eighteen-wheelers to fit on Josie Road. He states that all the entrance and exits will be on Tomlin Mill. Okay, so we're gonna take the traffic off of Josie Road and put it on Tomlin Mill. It's still the same problem. You're just moving it from Josie Road onto Tomlin Mill, and we will not be able to get off of Josie Road. Who is going to take care of the potholes? I showed also a picture of the sixty-five exit. There's nothing but potholes at exit sixty-five on the overpass. The zoning, I, I asked myself that you guys vote no. This is a um, nothing to our community, does not help our community, and does not give Iredale County ev, any revenue whatsoever. And the question um, that Mr. June had asked, are we still against it? Yes, we are all still, we're all still against it, if, to answer your question. Nothing has changed because he has changed his mind again. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all that's signed up. Anyone else here like to speak on this matter? Hearing none and seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Ask Mr. Todd if you'll approach back and anybody got any questions? Applicant will address any of this.
I, I'll try to address some of the, some of the questions. Um, the, the, we were, we've, we've never really changed our mind. The changes are coming from public input. I mean, we're, we're trying to address that, um, public input. Um, when we had our public meeting before the planning board, first planning board, I had a sheet, a, a big sheet out there of all the uses that were allowed in HB. And I asked the people that were there, I said, y'all, y'all strike, strike out what you don't want. If there's something, if there's some use that you don't want or y'all don't want, we're, we're happy to look at that. So I asked for that. Every, this is six, y'all know how many, they just said it was a couple hundred uses. Everyone struck out. So the, the community didn't want any development. I mean, they were saying no restaurants, no, none, nothing. So they don't really want any, um, any development out there. I understand what they're saying. I do. Um, the only reason that we're here is because the land use was there. And we were saying, well, this is a good land use spot. Um, and this, um, this development is not gonna like snap and it's built tomorrow. This is gonna take years to develop. This is, this is, this is a long process. So anyway, that's all I had.
Just a couple of brief points. First of all, I wanted to thank everybody um, in the audience for coming out and, and sharing your comments. Um, we're all, people here were trying to do our jobs and trying to present in the best way we can, and we appreciate the public's input. And um, and I think, you know, reiterating what Harry said, that, you know, the, the, the plan hasn't changed. It's always been planned for this use um, on our side. The changes have been conditions that we've added restricting the plan. So we've, we tried to offer that to um, address the concerns. Um, and to kinda have that turned around to be, tried to be used against us doesn't, I don't, I don't think that's really accurate or fair. Um, we're trying to, we're trying to address what they've previously brought up as concerns. Um, so, and, and I understand the, you know, I understand the, the fear. Uh, mostly, it's a fear of the unknown or a fear of what, what could happen. I don't know really how we address that. Um, there's always gonna be fear of unknown, fear of progress, fear of change. Um, so I think that's just something that's, you know, that's, that's there in any, in any application in any project. Um, but happy to address any specific questions um, on any matters. And thank you.
I think, I think for me, you know, just, I think to be fair to both sides, I think there are uses that would be allowed that would not be favorable by anybody from either type of zoning. Our goal in our template when we do our 2030 and 2045 Horizon Plan is to identify corridors that we can develop for commercial, industrial, residential, whatever, to try and prohibit or limit um, negative impacts on citizens, particularly as far off of the interstate as we can. What concerns me about what I'm seeing and hearing is the lack of specifics and um, concept is just that. It's a concept, it could change. You don't know what a traffic impact study, if you got to that point, would require, if it would require any kinda infrastructure improvements, lighting, uh, uh, red lights, uh, anything, till you know you don't know. Um, that concerns me. If there was a way to develop these areas or that specific area and address the concerns of the neighbors, whether that be lighting, uh, traffic, uh, safety, all of the things we've heard tonight, that would always be our goal is to limit. I don't know that you ever um, a hundred percent prevent it from any type of development. Um, and so for me, those are just some things that are up in the air and are not specific. And I think it would make a difference if we had a more definitive concept of what for sure would go there. And if we had an idea of what a traffic impact study would require that would potentially, and, and we're not considering all those things, I'm just looking at uh, in the big picture, all the concerns that we've heard tonight from everybody. And uh, but for me, um, that gives me some heartburn, for me.
I have one comment. Won't take me long. Our purpose tonight is focused on the land in blue for the rezon. That only connects to Josie Road. I'm not making a decision based off of what is going on on someone else's property when we look at other rezones. My attention is on what's in blue. Its access is on Josie. It's concerning. I know you've got a letter.
Yeah, well.
But what I'm saying is, we're not voting on the other, I realize there is a letter that can impact with this project itself, with rezoning off of Josie Road.
Well, and, and if I could maybe address a part of that concern, um, you also have the condition that we've agreed to, that all truck traffic would, would access the property through Tomlin Mill. So that's a condition of the, of the zoning that, that stays with the property. Um, so if, if we don't get, you know, if Loves decides something else and we're not able to get access.
Or they sell.
And not able to get access, then we can't, we can't do this use. We can't, we can't do, you know, we, we have to comply with that, um, with that condition. Um, so that, that's your reassurance that that's, that that's there. That's why we.
I'm not feeling reassured.
I think also a concern is, and, and I think it's fair to ask, you know, you're coming in off of Tomlin Mill Road, but there's a fifty-one acres that's gonna be used that are near these people. And you've got a dock back there that I'm assuming that trucks are gonna back up to load, unload, and to the, to the public's comment earlier, could be twenty-four seven loading and unloading. I don't know, cuz your concept doesn't say. You don't know right now. I'm just, I'm just throwing out things that give me a heartburn as we consider these things and take in account what developments we want to have in our county and protect our citizens at the same time.
And I, and I understand that. And, and, you know, and, and part of that was the reason why we, we proposed a BERM and the screening and, you know, those other conditions. If you think there's other things that uh, can alleviate that as well or that could be useful, um, please bring them forward. Um, we, we think that the, you know, if you think it should be a seven-foot BERM instead of five-foot or ten-foot or, you know, you, you all have those, you know, those decisions and those things to talk about and, and determine. Um, and I don't know the procedure, Matt, on that stuff, but um, those are things that um, you know, um, that we proposed and, and, you know, a, ask for your input as well.
You know, I wanna say one thing is, I agree with both my fellow commissioners. You know, our job is tough. It's, it's tough to make decisions, you know, and sometimes we put in commercial stuff and, and, and the public doesn't understand it, but it's, it's for different reasons. You know, we had one here a couple of weeks ago that we pushed hard, and what we were trying to do was put little commercial in, keep apartments out. So we were protecting the public. Our job, there's two hundred and ten thousand people in this county. We're not here to protect one, we're here to protect two hundred and ten thousand. And uh, whether a developer lives in this county or doesn't live in this county, but it, it's a tough decision, but we have to do what's right and sleep at night. So that's why I'm at, I'm, and I agree with, I'm, I'm, there's too many things in my mind that I'm not comfortable with sleeping at night. I'm sorry.
I, I'm gonna speak from several positions for a moment. One, uh, very first is, I'm gonna speak as one of two of the commissioners uh, sitting on this board currently that possess a commercial driver's license. Um, there's parts of this concept that are very attractive.
Right.
Very attractive. Um, I'm a property owner. I'm a landowner. I'm, I'm not a huge landowner. I'm not a developer. I'm not a realtor. I was a soldier. All I know is about taking care of soldiers, take care of their families. I just, matter of fact, kinda funny today is I watched, uh, I had a piece of land a, across from me, connects to me by the road, go in an auction sale. Um, anxious to see what's gonna happen with that acreage, um, to the point, you know, I'm, I'm a part, being a part of the process. Um, I'm anxious to find out at the end of this meeting what happened, cuz today's the end of that. So as a property owner, the first thing, as I bought and began to develop, and not develop, but put my piece of little property together so I could raise my Black Angus cattle and make some hay, um, I looked at the benefit to me and my family. Um, will my children want to raise cattle? I, I can tell you right now, I think the only chance I got is my, my grandson, he's about seven years old, I've got a chance to get a farmer out of him. Um, I'm huge on property owner rights. We wouldn't have anyone here talking um, about developing it if some farmer or their heirs hadn't sold this piece of property. So, you know, as we buy our property, no one wants to be told what they can or cannot do with their property. I mean, it's, it's an investment. And we, when we buy our home, or, you know, we expect or we hope to, to make a profit, um, either for ourselves or for generations to come. More and more farmers' families are deciding it's not profitable to farm anymore, which is leading this. And, and with the growth that we have and the, the, the folks that moved from Mooresville, you know, it, it, the, the sprawl comes with it. And the closer you are the interstate, the more likely it is, it's gonna be that you're gonna be involved in uh, the attack to RA land. Um, so as we sit here and we go through this, it's, it's very difficult because you look at yourself, what if I, and, and personalize it, yes, I, I wouldn't wanna, uh, looking uh, as people have stated. We, we buy with an intent. The problem is, is we have neighbors who buy and or sell with an intent. So it makes it very difficult and to have five people trying to sit and, and, and determine what the right thing for two hundred thousand people ultimately is. As I, as I sat and listened to this, again, there was parts of this as a, as a CDL driver, um, not on a full-time basis. Parts of this concept are, are, are phenomenal. But um, I hear the concerns and I understand your concerns. Um, know, all of us, it's coming my way. I'm, I'm anxious to see what's gonna happen to this piece of land across from me. Is it gonna be developed? What's, what's gonna happen? So, um, this is the hardest decisions we make because you're, you're, you're looking at people and saying, yes, you can or no, you can't do something based upon someone else's desires. Um, Commissioner Conley, do you have anything that you'd like to, to say or add?
No, sir. If anybody don't have anything, I ask, do we, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to deny zoning map amendment. Um, due to the highway designation area, um, the high intensity uh, related to travel, intended interchanges, there's just too much unknown and, and inconsistency with our Horizon Plan. There's too many unanswered questions. There, to me, there's too many moving pieces. There's been so many different, um, it, it is exactly that. It is a uh, concept. And uh, I think there's uh, throwing all of the different things that, that are still to be answered. I, I, I cannot support this, and so I, I make a motion to deny, um, because it does not, uh, in my opinion, meet the intent or the spirit of the 2045 Horizon Plan.
Motion to deny, to deny by Commissioner Stroud. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Rezone is denied. Five-oh. At this moment, I'd like to take a five-minute recess, and we will start back in five minutes.
No, that's fine. Look at the name on it.
Okay, following our, down our agenda, we've done our administrative matters at the four o'clock hour and done those by consent, and I'll turn it over to the county manager to go over those.
Thank you. We did have a very lengthy pre-agenda meeting because we had several administrative matters to review. The following items were all reviewed at our four o'clock and agreed by this board to place on the consent agenda. We had a request from the Health Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 14 in the amount of $5,000 to accept the Duke Energy Foundation grant. A request from Human Resources for approval of the public official bonds, and that is something we, we have to do every year. A request from Planning and Development to consider calling for a public hearing on December the 2nd, 2025 at 6:00 PM regarding a text amendment to the Land Development Code for multiple sections in the Land Development Code. Those can be found on the Planning Department's website or on our website as attached to this agenda. The detail of those are in that agenda packet as well. There was a request from Cooperative Extension to approve Budget Amendment Number 17 to appropriate donations to purchase and install a shed to house supplies at Cooperative Extension. A request from Emergency Communications for approval of Budget Amendment Number 11 to appropriate fund balance from the General Fund to repay the Emergency Telephone System Fund in the amount of $7,309.36 for ineligible expenses made according to the final PSAP report for fiscal year '25. A request from EMS for approval of Budget Amendment Number 12 and to accept a grant in the amount of $6,000 from the Statesville ABC Board. A request from the library to apply for a continuing education scholarship grant from the State Library of North Carolina in the amount of $2,175. A request from the Department of Social Services for the approval of a three-year agreement for the renewal of contracts for Panda, which is patch encryption and malware, and then firewalls for Statesville and Mooresville. And then there were two contingencies on that. One is to authorize the county manager to sign only after, oh, actually, I take that back, to authorize the county manager to sign. There was a request from Solid Waste to apply for the Helene Recovery Recycling Infrastructure Grant in the amount of $5 million, which has no match if it's awarded. A request from Finance for approval of Budget Amendment Number 16 to appropriate funds received for an easement at Lake Norman, and this is part of Aridale Statesville, this money will go back to Aridale Statesville Schools' capital outlay in, in the amount of $5,000. A request from Finance to adopt a resolution designating a deputy finance officer and authorizing signatories on dispersments, and this also adds the deputy county manager for signature authority in the manager's absence as well. A request from the Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 13 to allocate additional capital funds to Aridale Statesville Schools in the amount of $2,241,173 and Mooresville Graded School District in the amount of $617,393, and this is based on the actual sales taxes received for fiscal year '24-'25. Just for clarification on this, when we budget this, we budget based on an estimate, and we do a true-up in the fall of each year, and this is the true-up based on what was actually received in sales tax. A request from Aridale Statesville Schools to approve an easement for Energy United to provide underground utilities to Weathers Creek High School. This is something that was approved by the Board of Education and then approved by the county commissioners. A request from Tax Administration for approval of the October 2025 releases and refunds. A request from Administration to approve the minutes from January 17th, 2023, joint meeting with Aridale Statesville Schools, May 12th through the 14th, 2025 budget work sessions, October 9th, 2025, joint meeting with the Board of Health, and October 21st, 2025, Board of Commissioner meeting. A request from Administration for approval of Budget Amendment Number 15 to amend the Facility Improvement Fund project ordinance and to approve the Government Center renovation project design agreement and to authorize the county manager to sign contingent upon the county attorney's final approval and acceptance of CPL of any recommended changes. There was a request from Administration to approve the 2026 Board of Commissioner meeting dates, and then finally, the county construction project update was presented to the board for informational purposes only. All of those items were reviewed by the board and agreed to place on the consent agenda for approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have a motion to approve the pre-agenda consent administrative matters?
Make a motion we approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioners Brown. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved. Following down our agenda, come down to the announcement of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. I'll turn it back over to the county manager to hit those right fast.
Thank you, Chair Conley. We do have several boards that we're looking for individuals that are interested in serving or volunteering on. If you have, if you need any additional information on any of these boards or committees, please visit our website, or you can contact our clerk to the board, Mr. Bass, and he can give you some more information. We have six appointments on the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, four appointments on the Board of Health, three appointments on Central Atlanta Aging Advisory Committee, Region F, one appointment on Mooresville Board of Adjustment, and this needs to be an ETJ member. And if you have a question regarding if you reside in that ETJ, if you will check on our website, we have a news story that has a map, and it will show you the areas that are actually ETJ for both Mooresville, that Board of Adjustment that we're looking for an ETJ member, and we're also looking for an ETJ member for Troutman Planning Board, and that's an alternate as well. So, we do have a map on our, on our website under the news stories that you can see if you're in that ETJ. And then the final one is the Nursing Home Advisory Committee. There are six appointments on that committee. If anybody's interested in serving, you can locate the application on our website, or you can contact us, and we can send you an application.
Brings us down to the appointments, the boards and commissions. Turn it back over to the manager. I think we have one for the Recreation Advisory Board.
We do. We have one appointment on Recreation Advisory Board. We actually, thrilled to see, we had a lot of people that are interested in serving, so that is, that is good news. We had, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine individuals that volunteered to serve on that committee. Because we had so many individuals, we sent this to the Recreation Advisory Board and asked them to provide a recommendation, and they recommended Chris Montross to serve in that, in that capacity.
Do you mean we had so many because I sit on that board?
Yeah, thanks, I mean to get the street.
When you're ready, I'd like to make a motion. We appoint Taylor Gallion. She's got a long family history of serving the recreation community and the county.
Motion by Commissioner Haupt for Taylor Gallion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
No.
Okay, motion fails. Do we have another motion?
Make a motion to approve Chris Montross as recommended by the Recreation Advisory Board and...
Okay, motion by Commissioner Stroud. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
No.
Motion passes. Chris Montross. Excuse me?
Major call for revision, Mr. Chair.
Ma'am.
Right of the point, board, sir. Revision is in this county's bylaws for hearing oversight in a procedural call that prevents new business until resolved.
Do we have any unfinished business? Do we have unfinished business? Okay. Public comment period is the second meeting of the month, and tonight is public comment period? Do you care to read the rules? Because I've got a cough. I'm sorry, Vice Chair.
No, you're fine. The board conducts a public comment period. It's the second regular meeting of each month. The purpose of the public comment period is to allow citizens to speak on matters related to county government. Each speaker that has signed up is allotted three minutes and will be called to the podium by the chair, and the ordered names appear on the sign-in sheet. Please state your name and address before beginning your comments. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole. Responses by the board are at their discretion, but the public comment period is to be, is not to be intended to be a question-and-answer period, but rather a time for the board to hear from the public and take such matters raised under advisement. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and the presentation and not engage in slander or name-calling. Citizens should not discuss any of the matters which are closed-session matters, including but not limited to matters regarding personnel, or matters which are made confidential by law. Speakers who have prepared written remarks or supporting documents are encouraged to leave a copy of such remarks or documents with the clerk to the board. And with that, would you like to open the
Yes.
public comment period?
I'll open the public comment period. I'm sorry, I've got the cough going on. Mr. Kent Herman, if you will, just state your name and address when you get up, please. You have three minutes.
Kent Herman, I'm a commissioner in Alexander County. I live at 530 Ned Herman Road, and I appreciate y'all's time here tonight because I've sat where you're sitting today, and I understand what you, you go through. My wife and I have property on 122 Henry Martin Trail in Love Valley. I come to this meeting back in August of 2020 about some property across our road to see if we could get it cleaned up. Nothing's ever happened, and it's got worse. We had some representatives from, from Raleigh there back in July, and mosquitoes about to eat us up. I've been to the town meeting twice in Love Valley. The mayor, Tim Metta's, said that he didn't have anything to do with that property, and it's listed under Love Valley Properties. He said they had traded it to the Barkers. I said it's still, to, to my knowledge, it's under your jurisdiction to, to look after it, and, and I said it's a nuisance. I said, there's tires been piled up over there, there's piles of old hay, culverts, wood, truck beds, boats, and so I know how we deal with it in Alexander. And I told him, I said, you know, I need to talk to Mr., to somebody. He said, the second meeting I went to, he said, Mr. Barker's going to be here tonight. So, I met with Mr. Barker after the meeting outside. Did not get anything satisfactory from him, and he drove off out of the parking lot, left me standing there. And I told him, I said, Drew, you're going to do something, or by the first of December, I'm going to go to the Aridale County Commissioners. And, you know, West Nile's running rapid in the state. We go down there to ride horses, and, and a lot of the, our neighbors do, and, you know, to me, that's a problem as bad as West Nile is here in North Carolina now. And I just ask for somebody to do something. I know y'all do the inspections, environmental inspections, even though Love Valley is incorporated, and I just ask y'all, if you would, to look into this because it is a concern. They could have been 20 other people here tonight, but they've kindly asked me to represent them, and that's the reason I'm here, but, but it is a concern. And I do appreciate y'all's time. Appreciate what you do because I understand.
Thank you, sir. Amy Miller? No comment. Anybody else like to speak? Just state your name and address for me, please.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Sevigney. I'm the property owner at 212 Parkertown Road, Mooresville. I have been the property owner there for the past 11 years. The reason I'm here before you tonight is my new neighbor is Parkertown Elementary School. You guys are planning to come start development here in the, in the near future. First, I want to state that I'm not opposed to this build. Actually, having them come in, it's going to have definite improvements to the neighborhood, of course, my property value, and the biggest thing is I'm wanting it for the kiddos of our, our county and the resources it's going to provide. I'm here today to encourage you all to do your due diligence regarding the recent announced plans, layout, and design, and stress common sense planning when it comes to traffic congestion on the residential Parkertown Road and the intersection of Highway 21 and 115. A traffic impact assessment is a must if it's not already completed. This is an outsider contract, contractor that is coming into the area, and my fear is they're unaware of the history and traffic patterns that exist in that area. Shepherd's Elementary School has already proven the design for a dropout, drop-off, and pickup line in a high-traffic area like Charlotte Highway are the differences between life and death, especially for crosswalk guards, kids, and families. I was informed by the site's project manager that they are recommending a main entrance at Armor Lane intersection, that stop sign there. It would result in carpool drop-off and school bus lineups down the residential area of Parkertown Road, and again, backing up into 21 and 115 at that stop sign intersection. This starts at 6:30 in the morning. You guys are already aware of what's going on down that road. Doubling with what we currently are experiencing, not even a half mile or a mile and a half down the road, this entrance does not make traffic sense, nor does it, does the design meet school safety standards when you, when you're adding into the development of the new middle school that is now slotted to go next door. I am requesting simply moving the entrance farther down the road, more central to the design of the school buildings, preferably in between the elementary school and the middle school. Having one entrance to the school is a school safety. I believe it's a requirement, or at least a recommendation, so that you have one entrance to your educational facilities. Just heard the gentleman, Mr. Whalen, also speak on rainwater runoff, so now I'm going to go back to my property and check that out because my property is downhill, out of slant from that, the design of the road as well. So, I thank you for your time this afternoon and your attention, and I yield the floor.
Can you spell your last name for me?
Yes, S.E.V.I.G.N.Y.
I have one quick question for you. Have you been able to attend any school board meetings by chance?
No, I actually met the project manager on Thursday before Thanksgiving, before Halloween. They were out there in the field, and I just met with them out there and discussed it. I've been taking care of the property since the lease owners have kind of passed it on with all the issues that take place on Parkertown.
What did Mark say about the entrance and exit?
Well, now?
I don't think you met with Mark. I think you met with the project.
Project people, okay.
Manager from the company out of Hickory. She was there. The gentleman, I believe that you're speaking to, was there as well, but he said that the entrance to design, the design entrance is adjacent to Armor Lane and Parkertown Road, which is right next to my property line, and in the intersection of all of the residential neighborhood down the road as well.
And, and just so you know, Daniel asked me out to look at it, and it's, and he's right about what was taken, so I asked him to come here tonight and see if we could figure out, you know, we all know that we make mistakes about developing, and that we need to figure out a better way to, to make this work. So, it's, and like I said, he's, he's for the school, and matter of fact, he mentioned he's maybe going to move to Rowing County. You do juvenile?
Yeah, I'm a JCPC area consultant for the Department of Public Safety, so, and I will be taking on Aridale County in the future, so that'll be...
That design will come through the school system. Am I, am I correct? We're basically the, the funding mechanism.
Yeah, we need to figure out who he needs to...
Action Carrick.
I'll get Mark into it. Will you leave your name and number with the clerk, please?
Happy to.
And I'll, and I'll get that to Mark.
I've got his number. I'll get it to you.
Okay.
But yeah, Gene sits on the school board, so, I don't know. Advisory.
Task force, whatever.
Whatever. Something he sits on there, but he's, he is in touch with school.
Anybody else here like to speak? Hearing none, seeing none. I will close the public comment period. Following down our list, we'll get to the Commissioner updates. We'll start on Scotty's side.
I'm pretty good. I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and, you know, it's, it's a good time of the year, and everybody come see my Christmas lights, you know. It's a must. That's a, isn't that in the rules of, of Aridale County?
I believe you need to speak with the attorney about that.
Brad, you got anything?
Just want, want to remind everybody to remember the reasons for our seasons. You know, as we're coming up, we'll see each other again before Christmas, but, you know, Thanksgiving and, and what we're truly thankful for, there's a lot of folks out there hurting, whether it's financially, whether it's physically from ailments or disabilities. My, my children always joke, and this goes back to me when I was a soldier, just always remember, there's always enough, there's always enough room for one more at your table. So, if there's somebody else out there that's not as blessed or fortunate, whether you can have them there, there's little things that we can do to make an impact and help in other people's lives. I do want to bring up one quick thing, and it goes back to our vote on the Recreation Advisory Board. I happen to know Taylor Gallion, and I think she's a fine young lady, but we do appoint, and, and my reason for, want to explain my, my vote or nomination, we, we appoint our advisory boards to the different boards, and with this number of many people applying, I think we need to, to take their recommendations to, to heart.
There was also locations and distinctions
Yep.
specified by areas in the county and...
Yep, so, so whoever, Commissioner Haupt and, and Taylor herself, there was no, there's no slight to any other person there. It's looking at...
I'm thankful for those who want to serve.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's a bunch we've had in a while.
Yeah, that's, and I think that's a direct reflection of our county managers really promoted and, and our, our board clerk who has made the process much better and streamlined, and I'm appreciative of that in response.
Maybe some of these are one of several other boards.
That's what I'm going to say, if this, you've got the applications, and they may have selected more than one option from boards, and so you can reach through those and, and see. So, and they, their applications are good for six months.
Yes.
So, there's always an opportunity to serve in a way, shape, or form.
I will, and I will say this, speaking to some folks, the, the process since change with us, and predominantly, when I'm speaking of us is our, our clerk, has made it more streamlined, but also much more personable process. And I think that has paid some great dividends.
Nothing to do with this good cooking.
Vice Chair, you got anything?
A brief. Thanks to our schools. I believe this year was one of the biggest years for participation in some way, shape, or form for Veterans Day. Of course, out at West Aridale High School for, with Reggie Hooker, and they've been doing that for many, many years. But you see it at all ages, and I like to see that. I'd like it to continue to be more often, and we talk about, like a mindset, not just the one day, and I believe it's getting to the point where it's more of an open conversation. The life-changing skills and impacts and such that you pick up, and see, I would say, what Brad brings to the table from his experiences too, and so many people do, and recognizing our employees today was impressive just to hear some of their stories and journeys. But I appreciate our board being out in the community, being everywhere, and I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and, and special moments with their families. James?
Several things. Veterans Day just happened. I was happy to see us honor and thank staff and our veteran officer and all that honored our veterans that worked for the county and say thank you to the veterans nationwide and in our county and their families for their sacrifices and service. I want to remind everybody, the DSS is starting their Lonely Children's Fund to help get gifts to children over Christmas if you can help help. I wanted to, also attended on our behalf a reception yesterday for all, for four members of the Statesville City Council that was leaving. I think over eighty-some years of combined experience. We all do this job, and it's a thankless job. My favorite saying is, before you judge our actions, ask us our options. And I want to say thank you to countywide elected candidates that ran, whether you won or lost. Congratulate those that won and thank those that are leaving for their service. They entered the arena, and they took the shots, and they did the job, and I think there's a lot to be said and respected for that. People don't always agree with what we do, but I hope if we do what's right, like we've all said, we can make the best decision for the majority. Also want to wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving. I want to thank all of our staff and, and emergency services people that will work over the holiday, or anybody that has to work and take time away from family to pay bills. Be safe and, and remember the reason for the season, as everyone has said, and that's all I got.
Anyone have any new business? Did he say thankless or thankless?
It's manager's report.
You guys hit most of it, so just one thing, just to let everybody know that we'll be closed on Thursday, the 27th, and Friday, the 28th for the Thanksgiving holidays. So, we will be closed those two days. And thank you, Commissioner Haupt, for mentioning the Lonely Children's Fund. That has now kicked off, and that is, that is never a bad, a bad thing to contribute to. So, and that's, our Social Services Department is collecting for that, so thank you for that. And I just want to say one more time, you know, it, it is amazing to me to see individuals that volunteer to serve their country, and once they finish doing that, they, they come and serve their, their county as well, and the citizens in this county, and we recognize those employees today. But one, I hate, we didn't recognize one other, and that's Brad Stroud, because you've actually served three different times.
Just keep serving.
You just keep serving, so talk about, talk about a, talk about a servant's heart.
That's what I just said.
You serve your country for 20 years. You serve your county as a veteran service officer for 20 years, and then you turn around and come back and serve as a commissioner, so...
I just said he wasn't smart.
I, I do want to say this. I wish, I hate, we didn't recognize you at that event, but I'm recognizing you now. Talk about a true servant. So, thank you for your service, and thank you to all the other veterans for their service. So, I guess, I guess you could say we saved the best for last. So, but with that, that's all I have to report.
Okay. We did have a closed session this afternoon in regards to economic development in accordance to Norcon General Statute 143, 318, 11A4, and I think we have a motion out of that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for an Economic Development public hearing December 16th, 2025 at 6:00 PM regarding a possible economic development incentive for project innovation.
Motion by Commissioner Haupt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It is approved. Brings us down to the end of tonight's meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? We are adjourned.